Do you want to do a roll call, please? Yes. Mendoza? Here.
Here.
Tanya Booty?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Chow?
Here.
Here. Just down low. We will do the approval of the meeting agenda and just to note that we have rearranged a few things just to accommodate for some time constraints that one of our representatives has, so Sergio, if you can do the...
I move that the Board of Education approve an amended meeting agenda for tonight, moving the superintendent search update discussion to item number nine.
Second. Mendoza? Yes. Hillburn?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes.
Do we want to do any 65 district...
Sure, just a couple of quick words around 65. First, we are incredibly excited to welcome over 60 educators into new educator induction last week. Our educators have an opportunity to get exposed to District 65 mission, two days beyond diversity, and are spending their time exploring our curriculum resources, and we're really excited to have them onboard. Additionally, we're welcoming back our educators this Thursday, and clearly, most importantly, we are welcoming back all of our families and students this coming Monday, August 26th. I do want to say a sincere thank you to our educators, our administrators, and our operations people who have been really hustling and working incredibly hard to set us up for an outstanding school year. This, just today, we had the opportunity to receive our certificate of occupancy for our three sites who have secure entries, and so congratulations to the facilities team. That is, we are up and ready to go there. We also had a large number of educators this summer engaged in professional learning and summer curriculum projects, and just to really a particular shout out to over 60 educators that were part of the regional Courageous Conversation Summit in late June. Really, really strong positive energy from our team. And so, for our families that are out there, we are hustling, we are ready, and we are really excited about to welcome you back on Monday.
Great. Thank you. Can we go on then to Candace? Can you please read the motion and then before we, well, or go ahead and read the motion and...
I move that the Board of Education approve and authorize the Board President to sign the contracts with Heidi Winstrom and Philip Earhart in substantially the form presented to the Board to serve as the interim superintendents for School District 65 from August 20th, 2019 through June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hillburn?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. And with that, I would very much like to welcome and excited to announce that our new interim leadership for 2019, the 2019-20 school year are Dr. Phil Earhart and Dr. Heidi Winstrom. And if you guys wouldn't mind, coming up, I'll just tell you a little bit, the two are, they both are veteran educators who retired this spring with decades of experience, having served as teachers, school administrators, and superintendents. As we discussed in our July meeting, we opted to hire two retired superintendents to work staggered part-time schedules to make sure that we have strong, experienced leadership available to serve staff, students, and families in a full-time capacity, because there are limitations with retired superintendents and how many days they can work. Dr. Earhart and Dr. Winstrom bring significant collective experience in relationship building, collaborative decision-making, restorative practices work, and fiscal management. We believe that they will make a strong team to keep our district moving forward during this coming interim year. They have extensive and impressive bios that are going to be available on our District 65 website, and we encourage everyone to take a look at that. I know both of them, in talking to them over the last couple of weeks, I know they are both excited, have already started working on an entrance plan, are excited to jump in, to meet with our staff, with our families. As we open up schools, there will be an opportunity at the next week's back-to-school ice cream social that they will both be there and give families an opportunity, families and students, an opportunity to meet, so we encourage everyone to come and meet them. And I would like to give you the opportunity to say a few words. We're excited to have you join us.
Thank you so much for the warm welcome. I have to tell you, congratulations, because all of the efforts that we have seen so far, getting ready for students, the students are going to have a marvelous school year in front of them, thanks to your amazing educators and administrators. So, so far, our first observations have been absolutely joyful preparations for the opening of a great school year. Phil and I are looking forward to working with the teams that you have put into place. We've had an opportunity to meet several people already and share your confidence in the educators who are employed in this wonderful school district. Your work and your focus on the key tenants around ensuring equity and quality education for students are something that are very near and dear to our hearts, so I just, I feel blessed to be part of this, and Phil and I are excited to begin. Our first day will be tomorrow.
We are both very honored to be able to come onboard. What has impressed both of us, we were commenting about this this morning, is the expertise and skills that the staff has that we've met so far, but also, the bottom line is what's in the best interest for students, which we think is very important as well. So, we look forward to working with the school board in collaboration with the staff, students, parents, and the community to move the district forward on the priorities that Heidi has already mentioned to you. And our goal and the bottom line is to do what is best for students so that they become successful as a whole child. So, thank you very much of your confidence in us, and we look forward to working with you throughout the year.
Thank you so much. Welcome. And as we welcome the two of you, I do want to just take an opportunity to again thank Dr. Beardsley for stepping up over the summer and making sure that everything was, continued to be on track, on top of your regular day job, to make sure that we were ready for, to welcome, we welcomed new educators next, last week, we're welcoming the rest of our educator team later this week, and then our students next week. And the reason we're able to do that smoothly is because of your leadership and the work of the whole team at this table. So, thank you very much for all of your efforts, which I know were significant.
Thank you, Sunny. It truly is a collaborative effort for the entire cabinet, so we thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we'll stay tuned. There will be more information and opportunities for...
[applause]
Okay. And then, our next item, we have more new people to bring onboard, so can we, Tanya, can you?
I move that the Board of Education appoint Elizabeth Lindsey Ryan to fill the Board vacancy and serve the remainder of the unexpired Board term until the next Board elections in April 2021.
Second.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hillburn?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes.
So, with that, do we want to do the...
Well, before Biz takes her oath, I just want to, first of all, just note, we had over 30 applicant, we had 36 applications for this Board vacancy, which, this is something we've been through a few times, and that is definitely a record. So, I think that is just a testament to the dedication and engagement of this community, that there was such interest in serving on this Board. What Biz stood out for her experience when issues of racial equity, her track record as a collaborator and a change agent, and her extensive diversity and inclusion and school climate work in our own community. A little bit about Biz, she is a diversity and inclusion professor, trainer, and consultant with three children attending Evanston District 65 schools. Biz holds a Master's from DePaul University in Human Services and Counseling and a Bachelor's from DePaul University. She teaches classes on civic engagement, diversity, gender, and agents of change at DePaul University School for New Learning. She also served for many years as a Director of Programs at the Women's Center at Northwestern University. Biz has worked with numerous educational institutions and companies as a consultant building capacity for equity, diversity, and inclusion within their culture by providing facilitation, curriculum development, policy evaluation, assessment, and strategic planning with administrators, managers, employees, teachers, students, and parents. She is also engaged in extensive work with schools and school districts on school climate and helping schools create a positive and sustained environment where all constituents feel safe, welcomed, respected, and valued to reach their fullest potential. Toward this end, Biz provided TEDx in 2017 called "Why We Need to Talk to Our Children About Race and Difference," which I highly recommend that you do a Google search and look up and watch, it's well worth your time. Biz has engaged in this work in a multitude of organizations, including government entities, corporations, nonprofits, and educational institutions at every level from preschool through university. As you can see, she is, has incredible credentials, and we are thrilled that she will be joining us at the table. So, with that, if you would like to come up, if you have a comment there, and she can just read it out, I don't want to say it, just repeat. So, if you want to go ahead and read the oath.
I, Elizabeth Lindsey Ryan, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Member of the Board of Education of Evanston-Skokie School District 65 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow Board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a Board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public Board meeting. And I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
All right. Well, with that, join us. Welcome. You already said a mouthful. If you would like to say anything, otherwise?
I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve. I think we're at a critical moment for our district, and I'm happy to be a part of this process. Thank you.
Excellent. We are happy to have you here. And then, we have one final new member of the District 65 family to welcome. We have the appointment of Walker School Principal, so Rebecca, you've got that motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the appointment of James Gray as Principal of Walker School.
Second.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hillburn?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes.
Do you want to say anything?
Sure, I can definitely do that. I'm very excited to welcome Mr. James Gray as the new Principal of Walker Elementary School and will welcome him to District 65. In this process, the Walker community elevated the desire for a leader committed to educational equity and racial literacy, an instructional leader and a strong communicator. In Mr. Gray's past leadership, he's demonstrated the ability to work with educators and community to build strong visions and missions at the school. He's dug in and he's done the work as an instructional leader, supporting educators around strong instructional programs. He's also worked tirelessly to advance school mission and vision, and he's demonstrated the ability to apply an equity lens and use this to inform his actions as a leader. I believe in his genuine ability to connect with educators, students, and families, and we've heard this from individuals throughout the interview process and through references. So, we are incredibly excited to welcome James Gray, an experienced leader, to Walker Elementary.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm genuinely thrilled to join District 65 as the next Principal at Walker. The opportunity to lead a school as diverse as Walker in a district committed to equity was something that really appealed to me, and I'm really excited about that. While the process, the interview process was very quick, I really appreciate the opportunity to meet with staff, parents, district leadership, and I'm excited to meet everyone else in like three more days. So, thanks again for the opportunity. I'm really excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Well, welcome to all the new members of the District 65 family. This is our next item, this is where we move things around a little bit. We are going to do the discussion of the superintendent search, get the update on that. So, Dr. Hill, if you wouldn't mind joining us at the podium?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. I'm really here more to respond to questions and have a little bit of discussion on additional outreach efforts that were expressed by the Board, and actually to, let's do some assignments in terms of how we're going to get that done. The Board has received two documents that will become public documents so that everyone else will know what it is we're talking about and what we're doing. The first document is the Board update that was submitted for this evening's meeting, and it essentially outlines where we are in the search. So, if there are any questions about that, the only addition I want to say is, and I didn't number them, but about midway down where it talks about the number of individuals who have begun the process in terms of our online application, I've indicated that there are three, now we're up to five. So, it's very early in the game, but the fact that we have people who have already started the application process is very exciting. The other part is to remind you that we have started the posting in the professional organizations as well as the posting on the free websites, which include BWP website, the Illinois Association of School Administrators website, as well as the district website, that posting should be available. So, we're getting the message out, getting the word out. I've had several phone calls and inquiries, people who are interested in the position, so we're expecting to have a really solid pool for you to make your decision about the new superintendent. So, any questions about what we've been doing, where we are?
I think I would just also add that the packet has, has the copy of the posting that is on the various publications and websites for people to see, so that's what we're using, and it's very heartening to know that we are already getting interest from it. I think the other, just, the other document that we're looking at that isn't in the packet yet, but I think it could probably be made a part of it, we only got it over the weekend, so we weren't able to get it into the packet. In the July meeting, we talked about wanting to do some additional outreach efforts for, particularly to make sure that we heard the voices of our marginalized communities who we don't always, aren't always successful in reaching out to and making sure that we hear from. So, at our request, BWP engaged in a focus group last week with some community leaders and generated some ideas for how to reach their constituencies and how to make sure that we can get broad participation in the forum that we're going to have in September as well as response to the survey that we'll be, we'll be putting out. And so, that was the second document that isn't currently in the packet, but that you're referring to, that we, that the Board has seen with the recommendations from the, from that focus group of additional outreach efforts to take. And that's what we need to discuss today to determine what of those recommendations we want to move forward with, and, you know, quite frankly, how they're going to move forward, because obviously, the lot has already been done to try to get us prepared for the September outreach activities in addition to opening schools. So, there's just a lot going on, and we just need to make sure that we, I think there's a lot of good ideas in that document, and I think we want to implement as many of them as possible, but I think we also have to be mindful of not overburdening staff that's already quite busy with getting things prepared for the opening of schools to make sure that we can handle, cover all those tasks.
So, for the purpose of the audience, let me just say that initially, about 20 constituent groups were organized, or the names of 20 were provided, and there are going to be more for sure with regards to invitations for the focus groups. The expectation is probably somewhere around 30, 35, and that on September 12th, we will be working with those focus groups. They'll be asked to, ask a representative of their group to attend, maybe one or maybe two, and those focus groups will be running concurrently on September 12th. Of the group that was, leaders who were identified for, I don't want to say hard to reach, but sometimes groups that need to have additional encouragement to participate, there were seven, 10 people were invited, seven attended. We spent about half of the time with my just sharing the process and the rationale for the process, and everybody knows I'm willing to talk about it ad nauseam to anybody that will listen, especially with regards to the participation that's really needed by the community and how we can encourage everyone to take part. If everyone just does one little thing of the community engagement activities, it will give us an opportunity to create a community audit that gives the broad perspective of who we are. And I've had people question the 80% and whether that's going to include the marginalized, and it, I want people not to be afraid of 80%, but we had to have some demarcation in terms of talking about how we generate the list, the top 10 challenges, the top 10 things that are considered best about District 65, as well as the skill sets and characteristics that we want the new superintendent to have. So, don't let the 80% scare you, because what, it's in my experience, I think we would be surprised at how close we are in terms of what we are all looking for with regards to what's best for our students. And so, having shared that information with those seven people...
Can I just really quickly jump in with a clarification, just so make sure everyone understands the whole 80%?
Right.
That that is, when BWP shares with us the leadership profile, the recommended leadership profile, it's going to include feedback from all of these various engagement activities.
Correct.
And the top 10 will include things that at least 80% of respondents noted.
Right.
But the full report, we'll see in the full report, everything.
Yes.
We'll see all of the feedback.
The full report will include every, we take notes at every focus group, we take notes at all the community meetings, we take notes from the interviews with the Board, we take notes from the survey. The survey takes about 10 minutes, but it also will have an opportunity to have open end comments, and when we present that report to the Board, you get all the raw data as well as an analysis of what we received. So, yes.
And so, I think, because the concern I think that was raised is that if we are trying to hear marginalized voices and they don't, they don't come, that, you know, despite our best efforts, and even if we get a significant amount of engagement from marginalized communities, they might not represent 80% of, of the voice of the total respondents. And so, that then becomes incumbent on the Board to, and I think that's one of the things that we can talk about, is including demographic data about participation within the profile report. I think that's the point where we can, using the Racial Equity Impact Assessment Tool, take a look at the demographic information and make sure that the leadership profile that we ultimately adopt, that we bring an equity lens to it, and we can look at, so we're not looking just at the numbers, but we're also looking at some of the underlying equity issues to make sure that traditionally underheard voices are amplified through the process.
And that is correct. And again, that was a part of the conversation with the leadership. And again, part of it was providing a rationale for why the process is structured the way it is. And essentially, it's really to encourage everyone, just as we do when we're doing voting and voter's registration and voter rights in both local and national elections, we want to ensure people that their voice is important. And so, part of that discussion was, what else can we do to give them information, to encourage them, to make it easy for them to participate in this process? Again, I think at our June meeting as well as at our July planning session, one of the things that I emphasize is that the plan, the objective, is that there will be no citizen in the Skokie-Evanston school districts who did not know about the superintendent search and who was not provided with an opportunity to participate. Now, if they choose not to, that's on them, but it won't be because they did not know, they had not heard about it like that. And so, part of the discussion was, so what additional outreach efforts should we consider in order to get that message out, get that word out, make it easy for people to participate? And again, once all of that information is gathered, the report that you receive will document everything, what everybody had to say, but we're looking for kind of the bell curve in the middle of the top 10 challenges, of the top 10 positives, and of the top 10 skill sets and characteristics that came out of all of the conversation and discussion.
So, when you said the, all the raw data will be included in the, in the leadership profile, will it be, but the analysis will not be disaggregated by race?
It can be, but if, but in order to do that, you have to include that in terms of the data that you are asking for, and that's one of the things that you're working on now, is to let us know, what statistical data do you want to be collected as a part of the survey? What statistical data do you want us to collect as a part of the focus groups? Concrete example, when I did the focus group on Thursday, just the leadership focus group, while I didn't ask for names or even organizations, I took note of who was in attendance. And so, a part of that report will say we had, and again, if you're interested in the participation level, we had X number of females, we had X number of males, we had X number of minority participants representing these particular categories, but you need to tell us what you want in terms of being able to delineate the demographics that will be important to looking at your equity assessment.
And so, that I think, I know is one thing that the administrative team is, is looking at, but I think we can provide some guidance right now. I think that should be something that we discuss as a Board, to give some guidance about how we want to see the information on the leadership report. So, I think clearly we want to see by race, we want it, I would think English learner status would also be important, income level.
Completing income information is pretty set off, sets people off. It will, it will turn people off from completing the survey, I guess that's...
Yeah, I guess that's true.
That's good information, but I'm not, I'm just concerned about whether...
Whether people will...
It will be a hindrance to completion of information.
Thoughts?
I would agree that collecting that information, depending on where it's positioned in a questionnaire, the city of Evanston recently did a survey, and the first thing that they asked for was race demographics and income demographics, and I can tell you that in certain pockets of the community, that's not something that they want to, you know, to give freely. And also, you know, having even to explain that to people, you know, which depending on, you know, I'm assuming that we will use the school enrollment, race indicators, but I just, I think I'd be, I'd be concerned that certain members will not want to give that information out, and that would...
The income information.
...in the placement of the survey, I think to be strategic on what information is provided and in what order, just something to consider.
Would it be possible to look at it by wards that have been overrepresented in past surveys? So, is it possible to collect the data on previous surveys that we've conducted, and then which wards have participated in, and which haven't, or at least the rate at which different wards have participated? So, then we know the, there's concentrations of, you know, marginalized communities in the second, the fifth ward, so what could, can we even look at it that way?
I don't know that we can compare with past surveys, because I'm not sure that we've ever asked for ward information, but I guess that could...
But I think that's...
...theoretically be another way to, instead of asking, I guess I was thinking that, you know, when we do our, you know, student-based reporting, we delineate by free and reduced lunch or not, but I see, take the point that that's different than asking somebody to complete that on a survey. So, maybe ward information is better to collect on that.
It's also possible to, for us to explain why we're collecting that information, and that may impact folks' interest or willingness to provide it in terms of seeking information to correct the balance of input in decision-making and to provide more equity of voice, that I think that it's possible to explain our why and to consider potential placement on the survey. And I also think that we may want to think through using the same delineations that are used during registration. are used during registration because we already know that there are elements of that demographic question that aren't accurate. And so I don't know why we would put folks in the same uncomfortable position if we know that there's a potential issue with the way those questions are asked.
So then I think we would just need to give guidance on how we reframe it.
At least in my experience and having friends who have had to register their questions around some ethnic identities and then having to choose racial categories based on ethnic identity. So for example, North African is considered white. And then there's the terminology is, I think, Hispanic for ethnicity and then having to choose black or white in terms of racial identity, which puts, and it's a requirement that then the racial identity be selected. And I, the feedback that I've been given is that that is an uncomfortable position for people.
I absolutely agree, I'm not denying that. I'm just wondering then what are, how do we want to break down the categories? I think we would have to give some guidance on what we do, how we do want to.
Perhaps we allow folks to.
To self-identify?
Yeah, it's maybe not make it a requirement that they have, that they have to choose both an ethnicity and a racial identity. Perhaps folks can choose an ethnic identity if they want and leave it at that.
So then as opposed to giving pre-selected, you know, check the box on this, we would just allow people to leave it blank and allow people to self-identify? Is that the, am I hearing the suggestion correctly?
I'm saying that, you know, it's possible on surveys to select required answers or questions that are required to be answered or not. And it's possible for someone to want to select North African identity and not want to select white or black in terms of racial identity. And if that's not internalized or experienced by them, then perhaps not forcing them to make a selection, but like not making the additional racial identity a required element of the question. Perhaps ethnic identity could be provided and that could be, just the requirement is to pick an ethnic identity.
How would that aggregate, so how would that ethnic identity information then translate into whether we are getting appropriate representation or not?
If we were reading the questions and a disproportionate amount of North African individuals said that they cared about X, Y, and Z on the leadership profile, but it didn't rise to the level of 80% of respondents, perhaps we could consider how does our data indicate we are serving North African identified individuals? And if our data is indicating that perhaps we have a historical gap in addressing the needs of that particular group, then we might elevate those concerns in how we review the leadership profile and review candidates.
So we better to do that based on ethnic identity than race if we were, and then self-described race?
Yeah, I'm saying that some folks don't, may not have.
A racial identity.
They may not have a racial identity, they may have an ethnic identity alone. And I think that given the data in our district, we would absolutely need to elevate anything that showed up racially as something that was a predominant question or concern for black families that did not necessarily make it into the 80% threshold for the leadership profile. I think that that would be something that if we were applying the racial equity impact assessment tool, we would definitely have to do that. But there may be other identifiers that.
I guess I heard only doing the ethnic identities, so would we, and pardon, if I don't understand, if we only did ethnic identities, would we get the racial, racialized information of what is important to black families?
So to clarify, I'm not suggesting that racial identity appear nowhere. I'm suggesting that folks not necessarily be required to choose both an ethnic and a racial identity.
That we separate them out.
Yes.
And give the opportunity to.
So I guess my follow-up question would be, would you prefer that as an open-ended comment? Because there may be a multitude of identities that people might provide and we can't list them all for them to pick one, circle one in the actual survey. So how would you suggest that that be included as an optional opportunity for someone to fill in under our comment section? So.
I think it's possible for us to provide some options and also provide an open-ended opportunity for folks to self-identify differently than any of the options if they would like. My comment was based on the suggestion that we use the current District 65 registration information, and I think that that's probably a good start, but there are some challenges with that as well. And so I was just trying to pull out what those challenges with it are. But I think that we could, I would agree that we could certainly start with what District 65 collects in terms of demographic data, minus the requirement that folks with certain ethnic identities have to then choose a racial identity.
So then adding on like maybe an optional line where you say, well, you know, this need line, and then you can type in, let's say this is an online survey, you type in that you're, you're from North, you're North African or you're Urdu or, but again, giving them that option on top of having the usual options that we have, but really giving them that option to really define what ethnic culture they are.
If they would like.
Yeah.
If it wasn't already listed.
If it wasn't already listed.
If it wasn't already listed, yeah. So we'll list using the, our, what we collect as a start.
Right, yeah.
To create the options and then leave kind of a blank that if none of these fit, how do you self-identify?
They wouldn't be required fields, you're saying?
I think those, yeah.
And they could be positioned. I mean, my comment was specifically about income. I think folks are at least more accustomed, even in registrations, to identify race because they know, and I think you're right on it, we can tell them, why are we asking this? That makes perfect sense. The income one just tends to be something that we don't typically ask.
Right.
And the only information we get is that which is given to us. So I treat that a little differently, but if we explain it, then I'm open that that's fine.
Race and ethnicity and we can clarify that you can either answer either one or both, whichever people are more comfortable with. Does that make sense?
And only because this is an opportunity that we haven't had elsewhere, I think also for what we typically ask in terms of gender, that we could also offer a non-binary option?
Is gender going to be important to you, period?
Are we collecting?
Well, if we were talking about our typical demographic data, we do ask that, but no, for this particular instance, right? But it may be relevant if we had a subset of folks.
Were non-binary.
Who are non-binary or transgender that indicated they had concerns or priorities.
I think that makes sense. Any others? And then I think obviously there are some that were already on the sample that you provided.
Correct.
Whether people are parents, community members, educators, and I think within educators, we'll probably want to break down some idea of, you know, what they teach, elementary versus middle school, that, you know, some of those kinds of things. And that I think we can.
Early childhood.
Yeah, right. No, and I think Melissa, I think was working on those categories. Is there anything else that people want to highlight for this?
Yeah, so Debra, you talked about the 80% threshold and you said, don't fear it. I don't fear it, I just, I don't, I worry that we're going to replicate challenges that we've had in the past, that will replicate and normalize only prioritizing certain voices and certain perspectives and not others. And we can certainly do the work as a board of looking at that raw data and comparing it to the representation of what has come up by 80% of respondents. But I wonder if you all have any capacity to wait responses in the software that you have.
No, we don't.
Marginalized voices.
We don't.
I think that's again what I said, I think that becomes incumbent on us to do. And I think that's why we have to make sure we're giving, we're collecting the information in a way that will allow us to do that.
And let me just take that a step further. Our position is one of objectivity. And so we go out and try to talk to as many people, to get as many people as possible from all walks, from all areas. As I said, no one should feel that they didn't have the opportunity to participate, but we take what we're given and then we give it back to you. This is what we saw, this is what we heard, some of it you're going to like, some of you're not going to like, but you will get it all. So that's point number one. Number two, it really gives the incoming superintendent an opportunity to see again where the community is coming. Now, one of the things you mentioned is how some of the challenges may be the same. I've been in the district for a long time and the achievement gap has been a challenge for more than 50 years. And so I would expect that people will continue to include that as a challenge. But again, it's going to look at across the broad spectrum of the input that we receive, where that false B, 10 top things that we list will not be listed in order of importance or they will just be listed as, here were the 10 top things that surfaced, they're not listed in priority order. But here are, here are things that you need to hear and see that the community pretty much as a whole is concerned about. One of the things that in my doing this over a number of years, I have yet to do a search where the community was so disparate in terms of how people felt about the good things in the community, as well as the challenges in the community, and even the skill sets, regardless of the racial equity or distribution of the population. 99.9% of the time, people want good schools, good leadership for their kids. They want someone who's going to come in and to deliver that and all of those little shades in between. So I'm very optimistic about what kind of input and data we will get from the community. I want to be optimistic about reaching out to all areas to ensure that people take this opportunity to participate. So that's kind of that, that whole piece with regards to the actual community audit and the profile report.
So I agree that outreach is important and I think just to drive home this issue, I'm currently reading Ibram X. Kennedy's book, How to Be an Anti-Racist. And one of the things that he points out is that in white supremacist systems, there's no such thing as race neutral. And that if it's race neutral, it's probably consistent with the white supremacist nature of the system. And so in this situation, if we suggest that this is a race neutral opportunity and we just need to do outreach and get certain voices, I think that we should presume that it's likely going to recreate the same outcomes that we have historically gotten. So we are going to see the same type of information that we have always seen in terms of what folks consider to be good schools, which have been good schools for some people, but not good schools for everyone. And I think that puts an important challenge on us to recognize that if we use the same system, that this leadership profile is not a race neutral leadership profile. And if it is a race neutral leadership profile, it's probably going to be recreating patterns that we are seeking to remedy. So we need to think differently as a board when we receive that profile and we review that raw data and how we apply the racial equity impact assessment tool and how we choose to wait the raw data that we see in comparison to the collective data that we see. So that's my current thoughts on, on the process and that 80% threshold.
So what you just said was exactly what I understood from the conversation about what demographic data to collect and what the purpose of that data was, was the information that's going to come back, the 80%, those top 10s are going to be there, but that we as the gatekeepers of this process are going to have the ability to see those other aspects that come out from marginalized groups that maybe don't catapult them into the top 10 because the numbers aren't there? And we'll be able to see that and, and make a decision as a board as to how we're going to include that in the steps of the process.
Ultimately, the content of the leadership profile that is finalized, it's a board decision, not BWP's decision. They can present the information, but ultimately we have to finalize that information. And so I think that's where it's incumbent on us to put our equity lens into practice and make sure that we are elevating the voices that maybe for whatever reason didn't reach that 80%, but we know we want to elevate.
And the important aspect of that is the, the actual profile is what we use as a screening mechanism for applicants, what we use as the mechanism for doing the outreach searches to find people to apply that may not know that they're looking for a job right now, as well as then leading the board to utilize that profile when they're doing their screening, when they're doing their interviews, and also to have the community use that profile when they're taking a look at providing input about individual candidates. And so that's why that piece becomes very important. And again, we are awaiting your direction in terms of what information you would like for us to collect, recognizing that we're going to give it all back to you. But it will be, you know, organized and you tell us how you want that done as well.
Right. So with that, is there, yeah, go ahead.
So if I'm understanding who's doing what, then, and we obviously can interpret the data as a board, but if PWP is, sorry, if they're not, they're going to have the disaggregated data. You can provide the disaggregated data? So I just want to understand who's doing it from a staffing standpoint. Our research team won't be responsible for it.
No, that's BWP will present the report with whatever presented, however we ask them to, with whatever demographic information we ask of them. And then we'll, that's, I don't remember offhand, but I know we have the dates on the calendar that we discussed in July of when we're going to get that. And at that meeting, we will publicly discuss that and then make decisions. And I think we do ultimately adopt, like take a vote on adopting the leadership profile. So that, you know, BWP collects the information the way we ask them to collect it and we then interpret that information and finalize a leadership report.
But they'll be able to present us in a way that we can interpret it, I guess, as.
So ahead of the September 23 meeting, we'll have those top 10 elements as well as the disaggregated, racially disaggregated responses.
Yes.
In the raw, in the raw form.
Yes.
And will we get that in time for the public to also take a look at it before that September 23 meeting or will we?
No, you will get it just as the normal process would be, we will submit it to the board that the weekend before that Thursday. And it'll be in your board packet. Right, it'll be in your board packet for the 23rd. And again, one of the things I did stress to the board, we will not provide you with any documents that are not able for the public to have access to without having to do it for you. So just as I indicated with regards to the update and with regards to the summary from the leadership meeting, all of what we give you can be made available to the public, the raw data as well. One of the things that we do in terms of the raw data is when people name individuals, we redact those names. And if there's something that we believe is inappropriate as a part of the data, you will get that, but you will get that as a separate confidential document. Because again, you need to protect individuals and, you know, have some semblance of that. But beyond that, all of that is public information. Again, working with your, with Melissa and the media people and newspaper and whoever else, we want to make sure that the public has an opportunity to see that they were heard. I have gotten lots of compliments after a search was completed and a report was presented, where people actually read every one of those comments and they could find what they said. And even though their name wasn't listed because it was pretty much verbatim, they said, I said that, that was me, I said that. And it may not have been a part of the top 10, but the recognition that they were listened to and that that was recorded and that that was information shared really does. to, and that that was recorded, and that that was information shared, really does strengthen the process. Because the intent, again, is to have the community collectively support whoever you hire as a superintendent on the basis of having completed this profile.
So I think just to clarify, we wanna make sure that when we're getting the top 10 or whatever, we wanna see the demographic information on that, as well as on anything that didn't make the top 10, so that then we can judge how we wanna maneuver things as we need to.
And it'll even tell you the percentage. It'll say, you know, this many people didn't do such and such. Right.
And I think an additional demographic piece that we would want to see is having a student with an IEP.
Yes.
Or I don't know if we'd wanna include 504 as well, but at very minimum, IEP.
That's, yes.
Parent of a student with special needs.
I think, can we just broadly, student with special needs?
The other elements that were included, and again, you have that document that was the summary of the meeting with the community leaders. I thought they had some really excellent suggestions and ideas, and now the question is, who's gonna do it? So let me give you a concrete example. Well, we've talked about the first one, which was include demographic data about participation within the profile. We've kind of addressed that. But the second one would be to ask organizations and individuals to use social media to post information about the engagement activities. In other words, speaking with our leaders and saying, if you have a Facebook page, or if you have a Twitter account, if you have Instagram or whatever you have, could you, would you please, put in an announcement about the availability of the activities that the community could engage in. If they're not coming to the focus group, they could go to the community meeting. If they're not doing the community meeting, they could do the survey. The surveys can be done online, or the surveys can be done by paper and pencil. And so orchestrating that, contacting the organizations and saying, would you please do this? Could you please do this? And let us know what you'd be able to do is a task. One of the things in talking with Suni, we talked about earlier, because there are probably about a dozen recommendations that came from that committee. And my take on it is divide and conquer. That if a board member would assume one of these, or two of these activities, and make the contact and do the follow-through, the consultants could do so as well, the staff could do so as well, then we would be able to touch base and be able to accomplish this extended outreach to the community. For example, create a flyer and ask organizations to place them in prominent places and share them with their regular, at their regular organizational meetings. I sent Melissa and Suni a sample flyer that can be tweaked, or, you know, adjusted or revised, that requires printing, but it requires someone making contact, whether it's through the Chamber of Commerce, or through the list that we have, the directory of all the businesses, and sending them a note saying, here's a copy of a flyer, could you place it in a prominent place in order to ensure. Someone will need to do that. Someone will need to make that contact. It can't be all of the staff's responsibility. It can't be all of the consultant's responsibility. We are in this together. And if you are serious about extending these outreach programs, I think the board is gonna have to be a little bit hands-on in order to do that. You have a list of what those are, and if you could then delineate and say, well, you know, I've got an end with the library. And I can talk with the head librarian, or talk with whoever's in charge of the library, and say, could you designate a day when your computers will be available for people to come in and complete the survey, and have somebody on staff or a volunteer there to assist them? That would be a big move in terms of, again, engaging community, getting cooperation from one of your partners, and furthering the cause of trying to get underrepresented members of the community an opportunity to participate. So there is a list, again, that will be a document that can be publicized and get the community involved. Another suggestion that came up, what would happen with the number of churches that we have in Evanston if someone spoke with members of the ministerial alliance and asked them if they could make the announcement from their pulpit, or from whatever their designated thing is during their service, to engage the community? What would happen if 10 minutes of their religious activities were devoted to having a hard copy of the survey on hand and asking people to fill it out right then, and then sticking it in a sealed envelope, in which then you would send it to the district office and we would collect it? So again, it's taking a look at the suggestions that came from the leadership group. It, to me, indicates a commitment that we have to them to try to do this extended outreach program. It takes the burden off of any one person to do it, and it gets the job done.
I'm more than happy to offer up for the, reaching out to the Church Community Ministerial Alliance. I think it would cover items 12 and 4. Just would need some of that core content, you know, if we're gonna ask them to have, share a specific announcement that we, I'm provided with the crafted content, or, you know, whatever, what's one single source that we can use it in multiple purposes. But I think that's a great, an awesome idea, and certainly can contact.
Okay. We're working on the flyer, and so that will certainly be something, and then we'll probably wanna just hand out copies of the survey to them.
Yeah, okay, great, sure.
Number 12. So, we're still working on that, but that'll be...
I can reach out to the head of Ministerial Alliance.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to go to, and then distribute those flyers and talk a little bit about our superintendent's search process at Ward 8 and Ward 9, try to get on their agenda when they meet once a month. And that's, I've talked about that before as another way, as board members to engage community, our community around the work that we do here at the school district.
Yeah, I think we definitely need to reach out to each of the city council members and ask them, give them copies of the flyer and the survey, and ask them at their award meetings to distribute and to publicize in their newsletters and...
And ask the mayor to announce it at one of the city council meetings. They do a lot of other conversation, and a lot of other, a lot of different types of people come to city council meetings. So again, the list in and of itself is not inexhaustible, but it's the list that came out of the conversation with the leaders under the meeting that you asked us to conduct. So we need to do, determine what the follow-through will be, who's gonna be responsible, and then in the end, we'll be able to report on what that looked like. And that, I think, goes back to Anya. That will also give you another dimension of one of the pieces that Suni and I talked about, including on the survey, is, so how did you hear about this?
Oh, right.
Because then that gives you a chance to take a look at how successful your outreach was. You know, was it online? Was it, you know, at your church? That kind of thing. Will give you another data point in terms of how people were responding to that.
Are there any things on this list of 14 that you think BWP would specifically be best at doing?
No. But let me give you a concrete example from the standpoint of being a community member. I'm going to the ice cream social. I will be happy to take flyers and distribute them at the ice cream social. There are other kinds of things that, as a community member, I've engaged in. I've already talked to groups of people, began to talk to the media, again garnering support from the standpoint of my being a community member. Typically, the consultants only allow you, give you examples, templates, and it really, because it's the board search, it's not the consultant's search. And so while we provide substantive assistance, we typically don't do the actual additional outreach kinds of things. We help you set it up and help you structure it, because with the exception of me, the other two consultants are from other communities. I happen to know community people and have talked to them one-on-one as all of this has unfolded. Had a conversation with the desk president, had a conversation with the deck president, you know, kind of informal but not informal, saying, we really need to get you on board. Think about what you can do and what your organization can do in order to move this forward. So from the standpoint of BWP and associates in and of itself, these are not necessarily the kinds of things we actually do. We assist you in doing them. If that made any sense.
So, on the social media posting, Melissa and I have already been working on the invitation, and so I think we can create some e-blast content and things that we can include in those for the focus group invitations to ask organizations to do that. So I can take that part on. We're also already working on the flyer, and I would ideally like to have that before, because I know the community picnic is this Sunday, right? The Civic Center, so...
Is it this, yeah?
Yeah, so we'll try to have that for distribution then.
But again, having a conversation with Dr. Witherspoon about how ETHS could be involved. I know Dr. Witherspoon, so, I mean, I could do it, but that would not necessarily be something that BWP would come in and do. So that's kind of the delineation between roles and responsibilities relative to the outreach piece. The major part that BWP does is collect the data, and you structure it so that we can get data from all aspects of the community.
I can tap into the Villages Cokie side.
Yeah, I'm sure offline we can put together some sort of Google Doc to...
I was just gonna say, I think this is maybe better to, I'll create a spreadsheet and we'll just, of different organizations, and we can each list which ones we can take. And I'll, like I said, I'll have a go. I'll work with Melissa to finalize the flyer by the end of the week, so that we'll have it by the community picnic on Sunday, and then we'll figure out how we can distribute, make sure that...
Can you do that with tasks, as well as specific organizations?
Yeah.
Great.
Great.
Any other questions? Comments, thoughts, ideas?
No, I mean, I think these next couple of weeks are gonna be critical outreach weeks, so we'll have, especially given that it is start of school, there's a lot of things on people's plates, so we'll just have to, you know, put it out there, continue to put it out there, and get the word out, and try to get as much participation as we can, so that we can move forward in the process. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I know you rearranged some things to be here, so greatly appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Okay. So now we will go back to our, the set order of the agenda. We have public comments. I don't, nobody signed up, so we will then move on to our consent agenda. So, Joey?
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve the personnel appointments, leaves, and separations, dismissal of licensed staff, approval of Board of Education June-July 2019 meeting minutes, destruction of May-June 2017 closed session audio recording, May-June 2019 list of bills, and the May-2019 Treasurers Report and Budget Amendment.
I'll second.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hailburn?
Yes.
Tanya Vudi?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes.
Our next item is a resolution for general obligation limited tax school bond. Sergio, do you wanna read the motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed 18,200,000 general obligation limited tax school bonds for the purposes of increasing the working cash fund of the district and refunding outstanding bonds of the district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Great, second.
Second.
And then Raphael, do you wanna...
Yeah. So what this is, you may be wondering, when we talked about the proceeds that we're gonna get, have it been $5.4 million while we're doing the resolution for 18.2 million? What it is, the outstanding bonds from 2011 has to be paid back, and that's 12.1 million. And if you add that up with the 5.4 million, you get about 7, 10 million. But there's a possibility we may actually be able to get more than 5.4 million. As interest rates keep going down, the proceeds that we're gonna get keep going up. So that's why we wanna create a parameter that is big enough so that we can take advantage of the interest rate if it keeps going down.
And I just wanna also kind of further clarify, to take a step back for a minute, that this is all part of what we discussed last spring?
I think it was in April.
Yeah. About the kind of creative way that you presented to us about how we could kind of refinance the bonds, so to speak, to get this $5.4 million that we can then use for some of the capital needs that we have pressing in the district.
So I think we talked about that earlier, that the capital need of the district is over $100 million. And with the referendum proceeds, what the commitment that the board made is to allocate about $1,25,000 a year. This is an opportunity for us to leverage the bonds that were issued back in 2011. When these bonds were issued, we were paying an interest rate of about 5% then. With the referendum being passed, and with the credit rating that we should be able to get with a better balance sheet that we have, and the fact that we also have an increased reserves, the interest rate we'll be paying, based on what I saw today, we're looking about 2, no more than 2%. And it may actually be lower than that. So I'm talking to the bond rating agency one day this week, Moody's, for the rating call, to see how much we end up paying. I feel very good that the rate we'll pay will be no more than 2%. So if you compare what we are paying right now, of course, to 5% to 2%, that's a substantial amount of savings. And we can use those savings to be able to fix some of the capital needs in the district.
And then just to further clarify, this isn't adding to whatever the out-year was where we were gonna be able to start building up our debt service again.
No, it's not. It's just an opportunity to take care of low interest rate, and use the money that we would pay for interest payment to take that money, refinance those debt, and take the difference to spend on capital development in the district.
No way. Does anybody have any other questions or clarifications?
Are those dollar amounts restricted to capital?
Yes, they can only be used for capital.
Thank you.
Because they are non-taxable. If we wanted to use it for something else, then we have to pay taxes, then the rate that we'll pay on those will be higher then.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, can we go ahead and do the vote?
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hailburn?
Yes.
Tanya Vudi?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Lindsey Ryan?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. Congratulations on your first vote.
Thanks.
And then our final item, our discussion item, we have a school calendar amendment. Do you wanna go ahead and read the...
Sure.
Wait, are we, we're voting on this now? I guess we have to, yeah, so... Okay, okay.
I move that the Board of Education approve the amended 2019-2020 school calendar.
Seconds.
And then Beatrice, do you wanna give us just a quick, or whoever would be providing the update?
So, District 65 was contacted sometime last spring by District 202 that presented just a really wonderful opportunity for our educators to come and listen to Dr. Robin D'Angelo, that they had secured, to come and speak to their educators as well upon hearing this. Mr. Joaquin Stevenson recognized that this was a book that he was purchasing for DEC members to read as well as part of their professional learning, and really wanted to figure out a way where we could take advantage of this opportunity, and really make it available to all of our educators. We have over 760 educators. And so in order to do this, we looked at the school calendar and realized that we could potentially shift one of our half-day early release days from a Wednesday, which was March 4th, to reschedule that to Monday, March 16th, which would then allow our educators to participate. The start time at 202 is 2:30 in the afternoon, and it goes until 4:00.
To be a part of a district where, working with Meg Crewley and her team, to be able to lead what it looks like to lead with interracial leadership towards racial equity is really special, specifically in centering white racial literacy for educators, is something I don't know many districts in the state or the nation is doing, or even as a Brown man in this role can be able to offer and the district to approve that. It's just a special commitment with our union leader and our teachers to be able to dive into this learning and reading white fragility. Robin D'Angelo's first, the book prior to that was What Does It Mean to Be White? And so, this book really centers on white racial literacy. And as a person of color, speaking to my experience of reading this book, it's a realization that the patterns that exist in society allow me to understand that I'm not crazy. And generally speaking, people I know both personally and professionally that have read this book feel very similar to that as a person of color. And for our white participants reading this book, it's a very real mirror of like what the interactions one may be conscious of or unconscious of. And so, I think for our district to be able to engage in this literacy is something that is gonna be profound for our educators and how to lead and accelerate racial equity for our students in District 65. There's also... We're working through some details, but there will also be, once everything is finalized, an opportunity for a teacher to lead a book discussion in each site that has not been finalized yet, but we're working on that. And so, when this opportunity came about, the email from Dr. Witherspoon, Scott Bramley and Marcus Campbell to Stacy Beardsley, and Stacy forwarded to me and our team, what a great opportunity for us to see Dr. D'Angelo as a co-leadening activity with the book, with the discussion, and to be able to see her. And she's expensive, very expensive. We brought her to my former district and it's very pricey. And so, I'm just... I'm very honored to be able to work with a team that offers that.
No, this is, I think, a fantastic opportunity. Thank you to ETHS for extending this to, you know, in a joint work with the districts to recognize that this is important work to us as well and to extend that to us. So, I think it's fantastic. Have we thought about how we are going to communicate to families about the change to just make sure that every... Because I know that a lot of particularly working families already have probably the dates in their calendars to get childcare coverage, so I just wanna make sure that we have a plan to effectively communicate the change even now, because I know a lot of families do plan ahead.
Right. So, we'll make sure that once the change is approved, that we make sure we send the information out to families, we'll change the calendar on our website, and we'll continue. We can even use the Fast Five to make sure we're kind of blasting the information out and provide reminders, because it really is just affecting the one month of March. And so, we'll make sure that families are well informed.
And I would assume using principles too, to whatever communications that they use with their families to... Or Friday folders and whatnot. Are there any...
We'd also specifically reach out to some of the after-school providers to make sure that they're aware of it immediately after any kind of approval, because there are adjustments there and they can support us in communication.
Fantastic. Are there any other questions? Comments? Okay. Wow. Thank you. Let's take the vote then.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hailpern?
Yes.
Tanya Vudi?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Lindsey Ryan?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. And that was our final item, so with no further business before the board at 8:37. And don't get used to that.
All right. The next one's my birthday.
It's all about you.
I know. But anyway, I officially adjourned this meeting. Thank you, everybody.